Any further proposals or motions or amendments or any compotes?
I would like to move a composite clause.
Right, councillor Logue.
Okay. The amendment, I would like to move an amendment to the budget as outlined previously by myself. And if you look at the budget motion, you will see that there was provisional funding of 1.38 for roads improvement. I would now move that we reduce that by 700,000 pounds and that figure would become 680. That would then free up 700,000 pounds and that money, the 700, would be dispersed accordingly. 400,000 pounds to provide an antisocial behaviour service for private residents. So there will be a degree of parity and equity and owner occupiers and private residents will receive the same service that's currently available through the HRA. And also provision of Christmas lights in town centres for two years and that would be a cost of 300,000 pounds. So when you amalgamate the 400 and 300, you have 700. The 700 would be provided by reducing the roads improvement by 700 and that would then become 680 and I would so move.
Who's second in that?
I'll second Provost.
Thank you very much. Do you want to say anything for your second in it?
Just on the basis of during the recess, the Conservatives and Labour Group were able to reach an agreement in terms of a composite budget. They're never easy and they're always, they always involve more dialogue, but it's a compromise and that compromise will help to support our communities during the most difficult of times. Thank you Provost.
Thank you. Have we any questions, comments? I'm opening it up to debate at this moment. Councillor Kelly.
Thank you Provost. Just a few comments to make Provost. We remembered at the start of the meeting, all those from our communities that have tragically lost their lives to the Covid-19 pandemic, a pandemic which has impacted the lives of all our residents in ways a year ago we could not have imagined. That's why our composite budget, which has just been outlined, is a budget framed around the pandemic, a budget that helps as best we can support residents through the issues we face today, but also looks to the future as we rebuild our communities and face the challenges of a post-pandemic world. As an administration, we have a strong track record of doing the right thing by our communities and today we bring forward a budget, I believe, offers hope to all our communities in these difficult times. Our groundbreaking and innovative community investment fund will help kickstart our economy and offer thousands of quality jobs for local people with 500 million of capital investment in general fund services. This record investment, half a billion pounds, will transform our towns and villages with state-of-the-art community facilities for a post-Covid-19 world. Alongside our record investment in our housing stock and the largest council house building project of any council in Scotland, not only improving and offering quality housing, but the plans that we created in a pre-Covid world are now providing vital jobs and housing for our residents. Provost, we recognise the outstanding job our staff have done over the past year, going above and beyond to support local residents in the greatest crisis our area has faced in recent times. We all owe a significant amount of gratitude for what they have done and continue to do so. As the Leader and Covenor of Finance and Resources have mentioned, in this budget, we are committed to keeping up our administration's record of no compulsory redundancies. The council will continue to invest to support our staff in these unique times and help with the creation of good quality jobs and apprenticeships for our residents. In this budget, with Recover NL, we see significant funding to work in partnership with our communities to improve and recover our local environments. We have fantastic local outdoor spaces which we've all benefited from more than normal times due to the pandemic. Recover NL will undertake visible cleanups within all communities, but most importantly, work with our communities and volunteers in doing so. We know litter is a major issue and we are committed to doing all we can to tackle this head on and make it clear that such actions by a small minority are not acceptable. Provost, older and vulnerable people, as the Covenor of Finance and Resources has mentioned, have paid the highest price in this pandemic. That's why we are committed to investing an additional 3.9 million in adult social care services. We already have Scotland's leading home care system and we're committed to doing all we can to support those older and vulnerable people in leading independent, healthy and happy lives. The third sector have been outstanding partners with the council as we met the challenges of the pandemic, whether through food support, measures to support those feeling isolated, or a whole range of supports. We could not have taken the actions we did without Van L and the third sector and this budget commits to again supporting our vital partners. Provost, this budget contains a significant investment in education and our young people with new radical and groundbreaking initiatives to tackle poverty and inequality, striving to make sure all young people get the same chances in life. We're also committed to enhancing vocational pathways, making sure we train our young people for the quality jobs we are creating in the future. Provost, there's been a great deal of discussion about educational loss and the impact of Covid-19 on our young people. However, in North Lanarkshire, we have a resilient and inspirational young people who are committed to, who we are committed to supporting to make sure that despite Covid-19, they continue to have the same quality education and opportunities in life. We have dedicated teachers and school staff who don't agree that Covid-19 should dent the ambitions of our young people and nor should we. We all need to do more to talk up our young people in these difficult times and keep the focus on the future. These difficult and unique times will pass. In this budget, an environmental project will see every ASN and primary pupil able to plant a tree in recognition of the climate challenges we face in the up to the United Nations Climate Change Conference Glasgow this year. All of us are mentioned as an opportunity for young people as we hopefully enter a post-Covid world to reach a bit of hope, new great things are made and the planting these trees can be a symbol of a new bright future. We're absolutely committed to ensure the best possible future for everyone, working with people and communities and taking meaningful steps to a post-pandemic world. This budget does just that and I'm proud to support it. Thank you Provost.
Mark, can you, councillor McNally, is that only name you can see up so far?
Yeah, yeah, Provost, it's only councillor McNally that's in the chat bar at present.
Councillor McNally.
Well, thanks very much Provost. I welcome the opportunity to speak today on the motion that's been presented. Others have referenced the importance of this budget in protecting jobs, retaining frontline services and building on a number of key areas crucial to our recovery from Covid-19. The council, there's no doubt, has faced incredibly difficult decisions in recent years. That is a fact that none of us should shy away from. There have been devastating cuts passed down to councils for more than a decade. Government has inflicted harm on our communities, of that there is no doubt. The accounts commissioned, as we know, Provost, their recent report has displayed for all of us to see the UK government passing a 0.8% cut to the Scottish government's revenue budget over the last six years. And sadly, the Scottish government has taken the decision to inflict an even greater cut, passing on a 4.7% cut and close to a billion pounds cut has come to our councils in that time. But the reality is, as we've said on many an occasion and as the Leader said, these cuts are not to councils, they are to our communities and the vital services that we all rely on. We are in a better position this year and as councillor Burrows and councillor Hall highlighted, we do have to make sure that these services that sadly we have lost over a prolonged period of time are baselined and that actually we build on our provision here in North Lanarkshire and across Scotland. And the next Scottish government needs to commit to that seriously, Provost. Provost, this Covid recovery budget is aimed at supporting jobs, rebuilding the economy and helping young people and those in the most need. I'm proud that this administration is once again leading the way in tackling the scourge of child poverty and poverty more broadly. This council introduced the innovative Club 365 programme, ensuring that children have access to food every single day of the year and have built on that with the Club 365 voucher programme during the pandemic, introduced the sector-leading food referral gateway initiative and the North Lanarkshire Child Payment. In this budget, we're increasing the clothing and footwear grant to 140 pounds. That's one of the highest rates in Scotland and for the first time, that 140 pound payment has been extended to include children in early years settings as well, the first council to do that. We're also recognising the challenges associated with learning loss and extending our superb pathways programme to support all children into sustained positive destinations following an incredibly disruptive year. Provost, one in four children in North Lanarkshire were living in poverty before this pandemic. That is the sad reality. But what is an even more stark reality is that that will have increased as a consequence of Covid-19. Jobs have been lost, businesses are closing, people are being pushed to the brink. So I find it amazing, Provost, I find it extraordinary that the SNP group have come forward today with a budget proposal that doesn't include a single anti-poverty initiative. One in four children living in poverty before the pandemic and there is not a single initiative in the opposition's budget today to address the challenges and increasing challenges of poverty in our community. Provost, it's staggering. I'm in many respects lost for words and there's nothing in there either about supporting our young people to address learning loss. Provost, councils, councils like North Lanarkshire are the last line of defence for families in the fight against poverty. North Lanarkshire council is the safety net for many families. It's aimed at supporting those in the most need, supporting our recovery and Provost, I'm proud of what has been presented today and I hope that it is supported. Thanks very much.
Sorry, only see councillor Tom Johnson up at the moment. Councillor Tom Johnson.
Thank you Provost. I hear a lot of talk about cuts by the SNP governments, but that really isn't the case. This is an old fight we've had for the last 14 years, ever since the SNP took over at Holyrood. And for the benefit of the public out there, remember that 80% of funding for local authorities comes from the Scottish government and only 20% is actually raised locally through business rates and the council tax. So that's basically setting the scene. Hello? Did somebody interrupt? So that's basically setting the scene and what we get is moans from the Labour Group about supposed cuts in the main funding. But they never come up and say, if there's cuts in the main funding, we want them made up by taking money off the National Health Service budget or off the police budget or the education budget. They never come up with where the money is going to come from. We've been through this carnival for years and years and years. And the other side of the coin is, of course, all the extras that actually come into the council and the council love to keep very quiet about. Let's go through some of them. In housing, for instance, over 2018 to 2020, the figures I've got from the housing department, 772 new build North Lanarkshire council houses were built for rent. They get 33 million from the Scottish government towards that. That's 35% of the cost of each house built by the council comes from Scottish government money over and above what they normally get. Then they get half million given to them for buying houses in the open market. 300 extra family homes were bought by the council, but 38% of the cost of these homes came from the Scottish government as extras over and above what they get. Heaps funding. This is, for instance, insulation for houses. 725 houses, which were very cold and had no heating in the walls, have now been heated with proper insulation, thanks to, thanks to the Scottish government providing, I think it's 100% grants. 6.8 million has come in for 725 houses all over North Lanarkshire. That saves a family in each house 400 pounds a year in extra heating. And of course, those lucky enough to actually be owning their houses, it actually puts the value of their homes up for buy. And we take 70,000 Scottish households protected from the Tory bedroom tax. That's something the Scottish government gives. So that what the bedroom tax, which they pay in England's, we don't pay it in Scotland, thanks to the Scottish government paying, taking the burden of that. In education, this council has a 20.35 million given to it to build nine new family learning centres. This is, of course, because the Scottish government have increased from 600 hours a year to 1140 hours a year, the support for children. That alone, per child, is worth four and a half thousand pounds a year to each family with a child in childcare. 34 million in grants for the early and childcare initiatives in North Lanarkshire. 14 million a year last year, I think it was, or this year, for the Scottish attainment challenge. That's to help deprived children catch up in education. Councillor Jordan Linden has already mentioned, the SNP government helps low-income Scottish families. 10 pound a child a week, helping 35,000 vulnerable children. Nowhere else in the UK is this done. It's only done in Scotland. Free school meals for the primary one to three, that's saving 400 pound a year for families because of the free school meals for primaries, one to primary three. A 100, 100 pound coding grant for school uniforms, another example. And of course, I've paid the council tax for this year, another example. Scottish water is nationalised. It doesn't, it's not privatised as in England, thanks to the Scottish government. And that saves 46 pound a year in water bills for families. And we're very proud of the fact that we're on a social democratic Scottish government that sticks to state ownership where it's required. Thank you.
Mark, I see there's quite a list of people coming in. Councillor London, I see you put your name up. I'm happy to let you in. I'm going to let in anybody who's not spoken in any way at the meeting first and I'll let you in nearer the end if that's all right.
I have just told you that in the chat bar, Provost.
All right. So, Mark, you've got a list, I think, if you can run them?
Yeah, there's another three elected members wanting in, including, as well as councillor Linden, Provost. So we've got councillor Stubbs, councillor Jai Ashraf and councillor Branny McVie.
Councillor Stubbs.
Thanks Provost. It never ceases to amaze that we have months and months of budget discussions between party groups and council officers and then remarkably, the Labour and Conservative parties managed to find an agreement in a half hour recess, even done virtually. Maybe a bit more justifiable when we used to meet and there was passing in the corridors and whatnot, but that's not even happening anymore. So I think the cat's well and truly out of the bag at what's going on in this council. Labour, Labour leadership continues to claim that there's no deal between Labour and the Tories in running North Lanarkshire. I think an interesting point here is that in the half hour recess that we just had, I might, I might be wrong, but certainly as far as I'm aware, none of the leadership of the SNP's phone rang from the Labour leadership asking to make any sort of deal, any sort of compromise on the budgets that were presented from the two left of centre parties or the two supposed left of centre parties. I know one of us is a left of centre. It's no wonder, Provost, that good socialists like Willie Dillon no longer feel that they have a home in the Labour Party and the people in North Lanarkshire are seeing right through it. There's some good things and there's a lot of similarities between the Labour and SNP budgets. It seems if I was a socialist, a member of the Labour Party, then I think that I would be quite disappointed if the first phone call that my leadership was making wasn't to the other socialist party in the council. It's quite clear, the pretence has been dropped. 2017, David Stock's leader of the SNP at the time wrote twice to Jim Logue, offering to make an agreement to block out the Tories, to make sure that we had a progressive alliance in North Lanarkshire, a Labour-SNP partnership to run this council. He's still waiting, as far as I'm aware, still waiting for a response from Jim Logue to those letters. There has been no, no desire whatsoever from Labour to work with the SNP in North Lanarkshire for the good of the people in North Lanarkshire. And it's the people that continue to suffer as the Tories continue to be the tail wagging the dog in the Labour Party here. A very, very disappointing situation that we're, that we're in yet again. I'll leave it at that, Provost. As I say, I expect that there'll be more good socialists finding themselves without a home in the Labour Party as time goes on.
Councillor Janu Ashraf.
Thank you Provost. I would just like to reiterate some of the points that was just raised there by councillor Stubbs. In the last four years of being part of this council session, every year, year on year, when the budget comes to us, we end up in a situation where, as I said, the councillor Stubbs, in a wee half hour of side room chat, somehow the Labour administration alongside the Tories are able to come up with a conclusion, to come up with a joint budget some way, somehow together. And I think what is most clear to us in this meeting here is something that's very important for North Lanarkshire voters who are looking at this budget proceeding to understand. It's very clear, in our little half hour session, the only difference between Labour budget and the Tory budget is essentially Christmas lights. Christmas lights and a little extra funding for private residents and antisocial behaviour, but essentially just Christmas lights is the only difference between these two parties. And you compare that to the ambitious plans that our budget puts at cost for the following year coming, this hopefully of this Covid pandemic. And just reiterating a few of the points that councillor Stubbs had just made there, is that we're in a position where we can create a different dynamic North Lanarkshire council going ahead and seeing the sort of actions which are taken by other councils within the Labour Party to lead because they're unable to work within the confines of the attitude of the Labour administration to not work with their SNP, to not give us a phone call, to not work alongside us, just shows the farcical nature of blaming SNP time and time and time and time again, when they're looking at their partners like the Conservatives right now who wasted about 22 billion pounds on this track and trace, serves in the PFI contest that they've been involved with as well. But I think the Labour Party took a really hard look at themselves and for anybody who's looking for a progressive budget for the following year should be looking to support the SNP budget today.
Councillor Branny McVie.
Thanks very much Provost. Colleen Zon, proud to support the Labour proposition budget today. It's Labour values in action. We are tackling inequality across North Lanarkshire. We're demonstrating innovation and compassion, supporting children and young people. The innovation in early years is critical. No child should start a step behind their peers and having that, that grant available is a real leveler of opportunity and I'm sure will be welcomed by so many families. What we've demonstrated here is a budget that of Labour values and that Labour is listening. People have articulated challenging decisions that have been made in the past. So we're investing in semitres, we're investing in Recover NL, we're reflecting on the traumatic experience that we've all had dealing with Covid across our communities. We saw across the chamber a united voice in our importance of cultural and leisure facilities because we know that those facilities are the mainstay of our community renewal and our community participation and their ability to regrow and tackle and for us to work together in our sporting, leisure, arts and cultural activities and our heritage activities. They're so important. I'm so pleased that across council, we all, we all believe in that. But listening about roads, listening about grit bins, but listening about potential, seeing the opportunities for delay. I'm really disappointed to hear that we have seen an SNP budget that just wants the infographic on national policy. SNP group here have demonstrated no interest in local innovation, no interest in local government and no interest in local policy. Absolutely none. We have to be grateful to our government who gives us a third of the cost of a house that we need to build. So let's reflect that the other way around. NLC invests in two thirds of every unit, every housing unit built in North Lanarkshire. That means North Lanarkshire council is investing in every home in North Lanarkshire that we build, not by a third, but by two thirds. So clearly that makes us the majority investor. That's no hard, that's basic arithmetic. But here again, I'm talking a lot in my house about reuse, renew and recycle. Well, we've said a lot of reuse and narrative for the SNP. We've heard a lot of recycled old arguments for the SNP, but we've not seen much renewal here in tackling the recovery regarding Covid. And that's exactly where the Labour budget has placed itself, tackling inequality, investing in opportunity and working with our communities. UK leading in how we will support our early years as we can continue our ambitious investment in house building. We've also looked at how we invest in the support for those mixed tenure houses that have, that we have all had case work with its closes and roofs and renders that can't be done because some people just can't afford, they afforded to buy the council house, but they can't afford the maintenance. We've got that resource available to us. I'm proud of the Scottish Labour budget that we are presenting here in North Lanarkshire Labour. Local investment, local potential and local opportunity, lacking in others.
Thank you. Mark, can we get any more speakers? Councillor Beard, notice you put a comment up. Could you restrict the comments, as I said at the start, to people wanting them? Point forward to the declarations of interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you Provost. Thank you Provost. We've got councillor McPake, councillor Cullen and councillor Arroch wish to come in.
Councillor McPake.
Thanks Provost. I'll be brief as possible here Provost. I think what we've heard so far from our colleagues in the SNP is absolutely astonishing, astonishing. The leader of the SNP spoke for five minutes and never once made reference to his own party's budget. What does that tell you? It tells you there's nothing in it, absolutely nothing in it. Then we've got that great socialist, the great socialist councillor Stubbs, who is purporting to spend another 100,000 pounds and cutting somebody else's grass. I mean, that was a very difficult decision we made this time last year, but we don't need to revisit when it doesn't belong to the council, the council have no right to cut it. So we've got, another thing councillor Stubbs amazingly said was, we should have lifted the phone to them in a half hour recess. How dare he? We've been trying to get them to join the budget core groups for several years since this administration started and not once, not once have they came around the table until they had to. They were shamed into coming around here this time. So we'll take no lessons from the SNP on their shallow and hollow budget. I am happy and proud to support their budget.
Councillor Cullen.
You've got much time. Firstly, I would like to applaud the fact that we've managed to reach a composite budget with the Labour Party, which contains four out of the five conservative priorities, including funding for fly tidden, funding to tackle antisocial behaviour for all residents, not just council tenants, funding for vermin control and reintroduction of festive lights across our town centres. This shows the strength of collegiate working and the strength of the Conservative group in North Lanarkshire. When you look at all three budgets, there's not a massive difference in them. And collegiate working could have worked across all three parties, as has happened in other local authorities, but for the past four or five years, they refused to work in a collegiate manner across all political parties in North Lanarkshire. SNP leader just led a part of a political broadcast during his speech on behalf of the Scottish government. I find virtually nothing in the way of finding I find virtually nothing in the way of fight for the right of local government in terms of sufficient funding to support the service. The paper has been very glossy every year. The fact that it's the local authority budgets. Indeed, not one SNP speaker mentioned the fact that they acknowledge in their own budget paper that there's a deficit of some £50 million coming in next three years. Or not one acknowledgement of the £313 million that was mentioned earlier that's been cut off the local authority budget over the last decade plus. In terms of council tax, I'm glad to see that the SNP government ahead of the MSP elections for the Scottish Parliament have again chose to freeze council tax by providing the gap funding to local authorities. But let's not forget that in the first three years of this current administration, council tax rose well in excess of inflation. The fact for some residents, it probably rose in the region of 30%. The UK government has supported all corners of the United States in unprecedented terms during this pandemic. But the SNP have not passed this on to the local authority in the manner in which they received it or in a fair manner to ensure that local government is prepared to be able to provide the services that it can do as we exit this pandemic. We're all talking today about an £8 million surplus, but let's not forget that's off the back of £14 million worth of savings that although identified earlier have been taken this year, that's £14 million less in expenditure in North Lanarkshire council this year. Despite the fact that we've talked across three political parties today about an £8 million surplus, it's not an £8 million surplus. It's £8 million less we need to find of £23 million worth of savings. The council still had the same. Transparency and openness is a watchword for the SNP, but it's very, very little it comes this way in terms of funding. It's all smokescreen, smokescreen and mirrors and it's continual. Thanks, Provost.
Councillor Arroch.
Thank you, Provost. You maybe want to check if SNP phones are able to dial out. All I've heard about them so far is what the national government do, not what the local SNP group propose. But when you see their budget, you maybe understand why. The composite budget that we've proposed encompasses the vast majority of the SNP proposals. The only ones that are missing is grass cutting and trading standards. But what is missing and what is the elephant in the room is the underspend. I find it incredible that their group want to put £3.8 million into reserves as a Covid response budget, they want to put money into reserves. What we are proposing here and what theirs didn't propose is £700,000 into road repairs, £250,000 into cemeteries, £150,000 into accessibility and drop the kerb, £400,000 into clothing for schoolchildren, £300,000 into clothing for nursery children, £300,000 into improving mixed tenure housing repairs, £500,000 into LDPs additional projects, £400,000 into youth employment, £100,000 into environmental tree planting. I think they're actually embarrassed with our budget. And if the SNP think that there's any way that we would compensate on putting money in the reserves at this time, they're sadly mistaken. I support the composite motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I see councillor Larson, that's the only one I see. I'm just conscious sometimes you're trying to share, you can miss. Have I got that correct?
Yeah, Provost, councillor Larson is the only one in the chat bar apart from councillor London.
Right. Councillor Larson.
Thank you, Provost. I've heard the word proud being bandied about quite a bit so far this afternoon. And on the theme of pride, I have never been prouder to sit in opposition than perhaps I am today because the thing that we keep as a party, sitting in opposition just now is integrity. We have stuck by our party's values of dignity, respect and fairness and putting that at the heart of what we do. The Labour Party have been saying they're prouder of this budget as well, but I can't for the life of me understand that. It just does not compute. It doesn't make any sense to me. You have put forward a composite budget with the party who has spent years and years condemning this country to endless austerity, to benefit cuts, to universal credits, to the two child cap, to the bedroom tanks. You name it, the Tories have done it. And here we have the grey Labour party compensating yet another budget and saying that they're proud to hold that budget. It's unionism first, it's socialism second. It's not in keeping with your party's values, your party's ideology and it's not really focusing on the issues. Over three years, making cuts, you've cut everything bar the grass. And now, a year before the election, under the cover and the guise of Covid, you know, it's a big spender's fund. But what you're forgetting is that the money is coming for that, you know, spends from the Scottish government. And that money has been ring fenced. I know that's something you don't like talking about and you're not happy with. But what that ring fencing does is ensure that the money goes to the people who are in crisis right now to the targeted areas that have been identified at a national level. And many people have already commented that there isn't much difference between our budget proposal and the other proposals that have been put forward. And perhaps that is to some extent because of ring fencing, because we've had as a national government to be very focused and very targeted and ensuring that money goes to the right place at the right time. I just want to reiterate the fact that I'm proud to be sitting here in opposition with my integrity still intact. Thank you, Provost.
Mark, a thank you.
Yeah, there's another number of speakers waiting to come in, Provost. We'll be councillor McNeil, councillor Feeney, councillor Beveridge and councillor Damasio.
Sorry, councillor McNeil.
Thanks, Provost. Councillor Tom Johnston and his fellow SNP deficit deniers have once more reverted to type with their smoke in their mirrors. £57 million of cuts to be delivered in the next three years and top of £300 million this council's already lost under the SNP in Edinburgh. Councillor Stubbs states that SNP are socialists. Really? The North Lanarkshire SNP group, yeah, your North Lanarkshire SNP group, wanted to cut half a million pounds from this council's social work budget just last year or the year before. Socialists, come on. What authorities have been treated with contempt again with the SNP's austerity. What the SNP in Edinburgh have delivered once more is cuts, more cuts and continued SNP austerity, resulting in more misery for the poor in North Lanarkshire, those who can least afford it. SNP councillors continue to sit here with their see no evil, hear no evil, speak no evil attitudes. The SNP budget document presented here today, it's an embarrassment. It contains nothing for our residents. It has more look at me narrative from councillor Johnson, councillor London, councillor Coombe, that lacks ideas, that lacks vision and that lacks substance. Compared contrast this with the North Lanarkshire Minority Labour Administration budget, almost £4 million investment to support culture and leisure services, supporting community safety by investing and reinstating grit bins provision. Investment in environmental improvements to clean our communities, investing in pest control in our community. We will again tackle poverty by increasing clothing and footwear grants for those who need them. We will again tackle poverty by introducing early years clothing grants. We're also going to invest in mixed tenure grants for repairs, local development programme, enhancing vocational development, environmental project for USNs and primary pupils. This Labour budget supports North Lanarkshire's residents, unlike the SNP deficit deniers with their endless cuts to services. Thanks, Provost.
Councillor. Councillor Feeney.
Thanks, Provost. I'm delighted today that the budget's been proposed by the three out of a no cuts budget. I've got a red t-shirt that I bought at fundraising for the Labour Party, sold with the Labour Party that says never trust a Tory. And there's a reason for that. The rape clause, universal credit, five weeks people are waiting desperation for money to come their way. If we were sitting in the civic, we'd be sitting a mile away from the ravens creek. So I find it very hard to trust a Tory, even if it's a councillor Tory. As an independent and as somebody that stood on a no cuts platform to get elected, I'm delighted with the budgets that have came forward today. However, this is plain as the nose in my face that there's been backroom deals being done. The SNP said nobody called them. SNP, Labour said the SNP didn't call them. Labour never came to, they know they've got three people and independents that are progressive, left to centre, they never came to them either. So it sticks in my throat for a Labour budget to get through that we're having to depend on the Tories for support for this. As I said, the budgets are good budgets. Talking about bringing in good things for especially young children. But it's very difficult when you know what's been going on behind the scenes to get it over the line.
Councillor Beveridge.
Thanks, Provost. I'm very proud to be an independent councillor, especially having heard a councillor, a couple of speakers ago, saying that they were sticking by party political values and party political ideologies. Well, can I tell you, I'm very proud not to be sticking by party political values. I stick by the values that I find pertinent and relevant to the residents of North Lanarkshire. I welcome this Labour administration motion. Covid recovery budget, commitment to social care, ambitious house building, grit bins being reviewed, road improvements, environmental commitments, fly tipping, clothing grants, it goes on and on. Welcome the Christmas lights to return to our town centre in the cheap onion. Thankfully, there was no composite motion for the SNP's attempt to be cutting private grass because all that would do would cause problems amongst other factors. I thank you, Provost, and I will be supporting this Labour motion.
Councillor Damasio.
Thank you, Provost. Thank you for councillor Beveridge. I just remind them it's a Labour Tory motion. Yeah, a welcome opportunity to speak at the budget meeting today. However, it's clear that we're watching the same movie as before over the last four years, where the North Lanarkshire Tories and Labour present a budget and within a very limited recess, hey presto, here is one we've prepared earlier. We have a Labour Tory budget motion once again. I'm sorry, but the people of North Lanarkshire have seen this movie before and are sick of it. Councillor McPhee, you commented there's nothing in the SNP budget. The most obvious thing in the Labour budget, of course, is the Tories. And for the residents of North Lanarkshire, that is a snapshot of how your council is run on a daily basis. Thanks to the vast amount of Scottish government funding and the tens of millions throughout the Covid pandemic and the positive settlement this year, which along with officers, Admiral Work in North Lanarkshire has left North Lanarkshire council with a surplus of £8.2 million. Labour and the Tories should be ashamed, saying they support our local amenities such as community centres, town halls, swimming pools, leisure centres. It was they who worked together to pass all of those cuts to our amenities at committee. I'm delighted to support the SNP motion and the administration in waiting. Support the SNP budget.
Councillor Cullen.
Thanks, Provost. I was on the council in 2007 when the SNP put up their manifesto. I'm talking about the Scottish government. The three main planks of the manifesto, get ready to council tax, bonfire of quangos and reduce ring fencing to allow local politicians make the decisions. Fourteen years on, council tax still here. They defreeze the council tax, which supported the rich more than it supported the poor. There's never been a bonfire of quangos. We still have quangos running Scotland. Everything they've done is sheer. It's like they're a manifesto that they've got there now. We used to say that the SNP had their budget in the back of a fag packet. Now they've got it in a big yellow fag packet with nothing in it, other than one page which does nothing for the people of North Lanarkshire. So fully support the Labour administration, fully support the budget.
Thank you. Mark, I've got now Angela Campbell, Cameron McManus and councillor Graham, is that?
That's correct, Provost.
Councillor Campbell.
Councillor Damasio obviously has a very short memory. We just need to go back to last Tuesday at the Education Committee and in the space of two minutes, the SNP came to an agreement with the Tories on two votes. So perhaps he should think that, that has happened numerous council meetings. So perhaps he should think about that before he comes out saying about this quick half hour. And if he is proud of a budget which does absolutely nothing for poverty in this area. He's not thinking about uniforms for primary children, for preschool children, not thinking about anything to help people. We'll put money away. Sorry, so disappointed, proud to support the motion.
Councillor McManus.
Thanks, Provost. I find it a bit ironic that the Labour Party are showing themselves off as to be the safe area with the rat issue, parading about like St Patrick getting the rats out of North Lanarkshire. But in fact, it's true to them, we've had an increase in the rat population across North Lanarkshire. And now they're willing to work with their friends in the Tory parties to try and make themselves look better. But by them cutting the pest control a couple of years back, made the situation a hell of a lot worse and just Provost.
Councillor Graham.
Thank you, Provost. Once again, we're in the midst of the annual festival as the late, by his absence today, councillor Tommy Morgan would say denial, deflection, distraction. I mean, that's all it is here. It's a complete smokescreen. Provost, no one should be under any illusion here. We had an increase in the real terms of less than 1% of the core budget. The inescapable facts have been said many times, but I think they're worth repeating. A decade and more of underfunding. The budget will be reduced by the well in excess of £300 million come 2024. Pay projects supported by the expense of the core budgets, which people, our communities rely on. Cosler and other independent commentators are pointing out repeatedly the damage to our communities. But the Scottish government persists. And others say the money's not new money for these pay projects. The money is the money you've sliced off and packaged it and put it out to the wider domain. I mean, it's got to the stage now where even Westminster are going to consider funding local government and direct. Now, it's a complete embarrassment. We can't go on like this. And Tom, we were told, and I'll say these remarks to my friend councillor Tom Johnston, is that the Scottish government have given us a triple A in the last decade and more. That's austerity, austerity, austerity. There is a better way. It has been pointed out in this forum repeatedly. You don't need to cut. You've got tax powers at your disposal. There's never been any attempt by any Scottish government, any SNP government to readdress wealth distribution. Never, never. to readdress wealth distribution, never, never. There is a better way, a fairer way, and the fight starts now for the soul and the salvation of our communities. Thank you Provost.
Thank you very much. I've got no other speakers. I agreed that I would let councillor London in. We get through all the speakers that haven't been in. Councillor London, I'll let you in and then I'll.
Thanks Provost. Just want to come in, you want me to wait?
I'll let you in at the moment and then I'll see who else has come in before we go to summing up.
Well, a very many thanks then Provost. There's so much to respond to and I really am struggling to know where to begin. And I think I'll probably begin where we left off there from councillor Graham with his AAA from Scottish government. Is that a quadruple A then from Westminster, Alan's austerity, austerity, austerity? And more austerity is that, is that where we're at? You know, listening to councillor McNally and Kelly, hearing them critique the SNP and the Scottish government and playing the blame game and we are responsible for child poverty, it's landed on the door of the SNP. And yet I listened as they moved a composite motion with the architects of austerity, the Tories. And I listened and I never heard a word about the multi-million pounds of cuts from the UK to Scotland. I never heard a word about universal credit. I never heard a word about the rape clause. I never heard a word about the £100 million that we pay every year from our budget in Scotland to the bedroom tax. I never heard a word about the cut from council tax support. It's like goodness for Angela Feeney speaking truth to power and realigning and letting you know that you have climbed into a deal with the Tories. And then I listened intently as Angela Campbell outlined, there's absolutely nothing in this budget that deals with poverty in this area. The poverty caused, of course, by UK Tory misery that they've been happy to team up with. And the fact that they spoke about the fact that we'd made a deal at education and families or that was what was implied. Well, even if there was dialogue, what one thing we can assure you of, and it was quite enjoyable, was the fact that we listened to councillor Cullen speak, but his, part of his speech was already tweeted before he'd actually said it. And an infographic by the Tories that four out of five of the Tory requests were in the composite budget. Amazingly quick work in that half an hour, they not only managed to come up with a composite deal, they managed to make infographics as well. So the only thing here that we can shine a light on is smoke and mirrors. It's not the SNP budget. The smoke and mirrors is covering the fact that there is a Tory Labour coalition in North Lanarkshire. It is alive and kicking and their budget has put the final nail in the coffin. And councillor Damasio was absolutely right. Here's one we made earlier, the blue Peter badges are in the post for your infographics and for your budget motion. You know, listening to Labour talking about house building as a denigration in Scottish government. This is the same people who built six Labour houses when they were in government at Holyrood. I mean, it really does beg belief. We hear Labour proposals, Labour values was what councillor McVeigh said. It's no Labour budget at all. It's a Labour Tory composite. But the difficulty has been for every one of them is when they went to say that they're proud to support the Labour budget, there's been a pause because they know it's not just a Labour budget, it's a Labour Tory coalition budget. It's not a North Lanarkshire Labour minority administration budget, as councillor Neil said. It's a Labour Tory budget. That's what's going to be on the record and that's what people are going to see. You know, to hear councillor Rourke then criticise our spending, you know, telling us that they're spending £700,000 on roads. That's because you ripped a million pounds out of it last year and all you're doing is plugging the gap as a cheap trick this year with £700,000. It's no Washington with anybody. All of this is one-off investment to sound and look good, but no plans next year when we come to the council budget ahead of the election. And the reality is that our financial planning has meant that we can plug the gap for culture and leisure next year. Where is your plans? Not a clue, nothing to be said, no idea whatsoever. So this notion from the Labour administration, the minority in conjunction with the Tories, that there is nothing in this budget for poverty, but at the same time, we hear them say it's very similar to the Labour group's budget. It can't be all things to all people. The reality is the phone call never get made to Tom Johnson, the phone call never get made to me, the phone call never get made to Paul Damasio because the deal was done. It was already signed, sealed, delivered. The Labour infographics went up, but the Tory infographics went up just as quick because everybody knows it. This is a Labour Tory coalition budget and frankly, the people are having none of it. We are proud to support the SNP budget today and I hope that others will too.
Councillor. Councillor McPake, I see you withdrawn again. Thank you very much. Councillor Lennon.
Provost, thank you very much for allowing me in. I'm speaking in behalf of a resident of North Lanarkshire Provost. And I must say, I've been extremely disappointed to watch this today, especially to see the rebuttals coming for both Labour and the Tory party here. There's a couple of key comments that have been raised already. Councillor McNeil saying that the SNP budget is a complete embarrassment. Yet five minutes before that, we're hearing people saying the similarities in budget. I find it quite startling to see the fact that there's no recognition to whatever the SNP group's presenting. Now, the other comments that I'll pick up on is lost for words for councillor McNally in relation to anti, or no proposals to tackle poverty within the authority. Now, if you take the Scottish government's record on this, which I happen to have in front of me just now. Since its launch in April 2013, the Scottish Welfare Fund has paid out more than 256.6 million to support 403,000 households across Scotland. We have further recipients being families with children. A total of 23,820 community care grants allocated in North Lanarkshire alone. Obviously, the Scottish government's been supporting and tackling poverty in North Lanarkshire for years. But again, we sit at this point, especially in a time, now, some may consider this, watching this today as electioneering. They may look at this as this is the sort of sweetie before the storm that's about to come upon us in the next year. But again, the position here is with the Labour and Tory motion again being presented on a day. The people in North Lanarkshire are eventually going to wake up to what the tricks have been pulled by this Labour administration. I think incredulous that councillor McVeigh highlights that Labour are listening. He's had to listen for the last three years, but all of a sudden he's deciding to listen now. I think the position which we all now find ourselves in, we're trying to make the best of Covid recovery. And using foresight in that process by trying to bank and trying to make sure that we can come out the other end of this. I think that's rather responsible and to all in on the comments of colleagues. I think it's an administration in waiting Provost. Thank you.
Councillor Gallagher, you were one of the movers. I agreed I would let the seconders in. I'm just about to the summing up. Councillor Hume, to sum up, you've got five minutes maximum.
Thanks Provost. At least, at least I can appreciate all the budget motions explicitly stating that they wanted to offer options that supported all our communities to help them deal with the recovery from the Covid restrictions. Frankly, that's what should be at the forefront of all our minds and that's what's important. Unfortunately, we also had to put up with the usual Tory and Labour sniping at the SNP government. They rarely miss a chance, do they? Councillor Gallagher mentioned the sounding board again. I had hoped we would get through a year without that being mentioned. It was actually briefing sessions, not the sounding board. I wonder if the constant sniping in other parties against the SNP members and SNP government, what makes them feel we could ever work together when that is so unjustified and so regular and so constant? I'm going to, I'm going to cover some aspects that have already been covered. But that doesn't seem to worry Labour and Tory members either, but I'll be brief. They mention everything they're doing, but they never mention the contribution that the Scottish government makes, both to Scotland and the people of North Lanarkshire. Everyone in North Lanarkshire benefits from government decisions on free prescriptions, free university education, covering the bedroom tax and now 11 years of no council tax increases. The other parties think that doesn't matter. They certainly never acknowledge it. Also, there's a number of specific things that support NLC that are never mentioned. But every report almost that we see on committees has items in it that identify Scottish government grants to specifically support initiatives in North Lanarkshire that the council and the residents of North Lanarkshire benefit from. I'll mention a few. Councillor Johnson's already mentioned loads, but there's TCF, there's town centres, the Vicanderek Land Fund, there's Fusion, there's regeneration and capital grant funds. There's an advanced manufacturing challenge fund. There's the early years, which is well documented. There's active travel. There's the Scottish Welfare Fund and there's even an annual youth guarantee. These are absolutely significant measures that the Scottish government have taken that benefit people in North Lanarkshire considerably. We never hear that from the other parties, but just they're subject to the criticism. Also, also councillor McNally mentioned this disgraceful position that one in four children live in poverty. Well, it's quite clear that Labour had been administration for decades in North Lanarkshire and previously Motherwell and Washa. And children are still living in poverty. So clearly they didn't have much impact in that when they were in power and are still in power in administration. But I think that's all I've got to say Provost, and I propose the motion for the SNP budget.
Councillor. Councillor Logan, I'm not sure if you can hear me. My mute seems to be going on and off. Councillor Logan, to sum up.
Thanks very much Provost. I think there's a degree of paranoia going on in the discussions that have taken place in the last hour. Can I just reply to Jim Humes' comment? Jim, in my speech, I did make reference to over £30 million coming from the Scottish government. Also made reference to £4.6 million coming from the Scottish government to help with council tax. Moving on to councillor London, I'm not going to respond to the full outrage that Jordan indulges in. But can I just say, Jordan, that you made absolute no reference to £9.5 billion con- bearing the consequences from the UK government. You talk about the Scottish government's record on social housing. I would direct you to an excellent article last week by Jim Sellers, in which Jim pointed out that the proposed reduction for the next financial year from the Scottish government in the social housing budget is £258 million. I now want to respond to the comments made by councillor Stubbs, Ashtruff and Larson. There doesn't seem to be any issue when the Conservatives support the SNP and the SNP win a motion. We saw it last Tuesday, we've seen it at a number of service committees. There's no issue, there's no post-mortem, but suddenly becomes a big issue and the SNP become very precious, critical and maybe even a wee vestige of jealousy in there when the Conservatives support Labour. Can I turn my mind back to the SNP minority administration with Alex Salmon? Can I mention Alex today? Is it okay? He's not been airbrushed out yet. When Alex Salmon was the first minister, who supported Alex Salmon throughout the tenure of the minority administration? The Conservatives. So let us ditch the vitriol. Welcome to the real world of politics, real politic it's called. There is no group in this council who have got a majority. So anyone with any vestige of real politic would recognise that they would have to do deals to achieve anything. You have to do a deal. The question that's been posed today, why are we not doing deals with the SNP? I'll tell you in a very simple way. I would be most reluctant to do a deal with the SNP cohort in this council at the present time. And one contributory factor to that is the present behaviours of a number of you at successive council meetings. It's reprehensible, infantile. Why would I ever or my group ever want to associate or be associated with you? And until you clear up your act, then clearly the administration will not be looking for your support. I want to respond to Tom Johnson. Tom always asks the question, if you want more money, where is it going to come from? Tom, I'll tell you where it's going to come from. Better governance by the Scottish government. You know how we could get more money? The Scottish government could tell the county office to stop indulging in malicious litigation. You know what would happen as a result of that? We would have saved £100 million from the Argentine against the Rangers liquidators. We would have saved a million pound from the Argentine against Alex Salmon. Or maybe that we concentrate on the day job and we make sure when we build new hospitals, we get them right. Because you know what we've spent so far in new hospitals? £100 million. Or we improve delayed discharges. Do you know over the last five years how much delayed discharges have cost the Scottish government? £650 million. Or else we get our governance right in terms of external funding. Did you see the report last week from EC commissioners? £190 million penalty to the Scottish government because of spending irregularities. They can't even get that bit right. Also, stop buying companies like Fitbarb. The Scottish government bought Fitbarb for £53 million and sold it. Sold it for £850. Stop buying companies like Fairness Marine at £200 million. See if you did all that, Tom. That comes to over 1.5 billion. We would get 7% of that on the spending formula and we would have a lot more money than we have today. There's the answer to it. I take great delight in moving the amended recommendation or motion today.
Thank you. Andrew, can we go to the vote please?
Yes Provost, there's a motion from councillor, an amended motion from councillor Logue, an amendment from councillor Hume. I'll call each member's name out in turn if you could indicate if you wish to support the motion amendment or if you're abstaining. Councillor Anderson. Councillor Dinesh Ashraf.
Amendment.
Councillor Janade Ashraf.
Amendment.
Councillor Baird. Councillor Barclay.
Amendment.
Councillor Beveridge.
Motion.
Councillor Branagh McVeigh.
Motion.
Councillor Burgess.
Motion.
Councillor Burrows.
Motion.
Councillor Cameron.
Motion.
Councillor Campbell.
Motion.
Councillor Carragher.
Amendment.
Councillor Carson.
Motion.
Councillor Castles.
Motion.
Councillor Michael Coyle.
Amendment.
Councillor Sophia Coyle.
Amendment.
Councillor Cullen.
Motion.
Councillor Curran.
Motion.
Councillor Curry. Councillor Damasio.
Amendment.
Councillor Doxy. So you can tell again please, Councillor Doxy. Can you repeat please, Councillor Doxy? I didn't catch that. So you keep on cutting out. I think you're going to mute too early. Motion. Thank you.
Motion.
Thank you. Councillor Doolan.
Abstain.
Thank you. Councillor Douglas. No. Councillor Duffy.
Motion.
Councillor Fannan. Abstain. Councillor Faruk.
Amendment.
Councillor Feeney.
Abstain.
Councillor Fisher.
Motion.
Councillor Fotheringham.
Amendment.
Councillor Gallagher.
Motion.
Councillor Goldie. Councillor Goldie.
Amendment.
Councillor Goldsack.
Motion.
Councillor Gurley.
Motion.
Councillor Graham.
Motion.
Councillor Hume.
Amendment.
Councillor Catherine Johnson.
Andrew, Andrew, sorry, can I ask you, did you get, did you get the votes from councillors Anderson and Baird?
I'm going to come back to those members because I can't accept, I can't accept it via the chat bar, I'll need them to verbally give their votes, I'll do that.
We'll do that at the end, sorry.
Thank you, sorry.
Councillor Catherine Johnson.
Amendment.
Councillor Tom Johnson.
Amendment.
Councillor Jones.
Motion.
Councillor Kelly.
Motion.
Councillor Care.
Amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Larson.
Amendment.
Councillor Lennon.
Amendment.
Councillor Linden.
Amendment.
Councillor Logan.
Motion.
Councillor McGregor.
Amendment.
Councillor McGowan.
Amendment.
Councillor Masterton.
Amendment.
Councillor McCullough.
Motion.
Councillor McKendrick. Left. Councillor McLaren.
Motion.
Councillor McManus.
Amendment.
Councillor McNally.
Motion.
Councillor McNeil.
Motion.
Councillor McPake.
Motion.
Councillor McVeigh.
Motion.
Councillor Mooney.
Motion.
Councillor O'Rourke.
Motion.
Councillor Pettigrew.
Sorry, Andrew. Amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Quigley.
Motion.
Councillor Redden.
Motion.
Councillor Rorty.
Motion.
Councillor Shevlin.
Motion.
Councillor Shields.
Motion.
Councillor Stephen.
I can't unmute.
We can hear you councillor Stephen.
Oh, sorry, I'm having problems with my computer, so I apologise. It's amendment please.
Thank you. Councillor Stevenson.
Motion.
Councillor Stocks.
Amendment.
Councillor Stubbs.
Amendment.
Councillor Alan Valentine.
Amendment.
Councillor Annette Valentine.
Amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Watson. Just checking if councillor Watson's on because he's been having technical problems today. No. Councillor Weir. Councillor Weir.
Amendment.
Councillor Wilson, thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Motion.
And councillor Woods.
Motion.
Thank you. So I will go back to members who have indicated they wish to vote in the chat bar. Councillor Anderson.
Amendment.
Councillor Baird.
Amendment.
Thank you. And councillor, and councillor Douglas.
Motion.
And can I just check, is councillor Watson here? Are you able to cast your vote? No. We have 30 votes for the amendment, 36 for the motion with three abstentions, so the motion is carried.
Sorry, my mute seems to be this new computer. Can I thank all the officers for their support and help today? And can I also thank in particular our finance officers and others who have helped support everybody to get to this stage with their budget today? And thank everybody for their attendance. Bye.